Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. One thing I did want to mention, I did get an email from a parent who was listening last time on YouTube Live. And if everybody can just speak into the microphones, because what she mentioned was that when she was watching it, she could not really hear anybody. So she could hear some like muddling of sounds, but didn't couldn't pick up what we were being said because it wasn't very clear. So I said, thank you very much. We were not aware that 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 wasn't coming through loud and clear. So if you are going to speak, just bring the microphones a little bit closer to you so that the people watching on YouTube Live can hear what we're actually saying. Great. First up is acknowledgement of a donation. The board would like to acknowledge Whitney Farms Men's Golf Club for their generous donation of $800. The donation was divided between the Massey Boys Golf Team for $250, the Girls Golf Team for $250, and Robotics for $300. They are not here this evening, but we'd like to thank them very much for that generous donation to our programs.
Very nice. Absolutely. They're definitely very good partners with us.
All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. So I have a motion to approve. Thank you, Shannon. Thank you, Nick, for a second. Joe, do you want to talk about our notification of retirement?
Yeah, I just want to wish both Tammy Sotchi, who was a parent educator over at Stepney Elementary, wish her the best. And Becky Rosen is a special education teacher at Font Hollow for the last 14 years. Had several years, I think, outside of the state of Connecticut before that. But I definitely want to wish both of them the best as they move on.
Great, thank you so much. Anybody have anything else? Hearing none, all in favor. Great, thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. And first up is our Massey Board Representatives.
Good evening, Board of Ed. So first I'll talk about sports tonight. Our field hockey team won 2 to 0 over Immaculate. Our girls soccer team lost to Immaculate, losing 4 to 1. And our boys soccer team also lost to Weston, losing 1 to 0, 1 to 3, sorry. And then, as a member of the Massey Drama Department, very happy to say that we will have a winter drama this year. So the show will be a collection of one-act plays by famous writer Thornton Wilder, who wrote Our Town. And the auditions will be November 9th through 13th, and the performances will be January 21st to the 23rd. And the Parent Teacher Club is holding a raffle for students. And our first winner is Caleb Manick, who received a Mac Daddy's gift card.
The winners for Most Spirited over the past two weeks included Cameron Yensik, Lauren Davis, Victoria Gloria, Emily Reed, Nathan McCauley, Keegan Simmons, Yara Sheikh, and Audrey Lesko. Yesterday Memories Matter Club held a walkathon and raised $810 for the Alzheimer's Association. Massey's Helping Hands Food Drive began today and will be accepting non-perishable food items and toiletries until November 4th.
Last Friday, October 30th, marked the end of quarter one. And last week, students raised over $200 during Spirit Week for breast cancer research via the Dunk Tank donations. Thanks to our staff who participated, Mr. Schwartz, Mr. Collins, Mr. Lowell, and Mr. Kofzo. And finally, parent-teacher phone conferences will be held on November 12th and 17th. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else have any committee reports? Nick?
The Pension Committee met October 22nd. Couple of things we went over there of note. We're being a little bit more realistic with our rates of return. And we're right at the median for the rate of return we're using now, which is 6 and 3/4. And we did achieve 7.2% over five years. So we are in line with what we're projecting. Interestingly enough, and a good note, is that Monroe is in the 90 to 100% funded band of municipalities. And if you look at the chart, the overwhelming majority were in the 70 to 80 and 80 to 90. And so we are in the top tier of funded pension programs. The town is 93.9% funded, and the BOE is 92.3% funded, which is great. Our broker is expecting overall negative GDP growth in 2020, which is to be expected. But they are projecting sharp positive growth in 2021 pending vaccine or some type of recovery. Year-to-date, we are minus 1.4% in our portfolio, and our benchmark was positive 1.4%. So we are off by 2.8% for the year. However, personally, seeing what's going on, I don't think that's actually awful, based on relative to the rest of the market. And the Pension Committee did vote to change one of our funds, one of our international funds, based upon the recommendation of the broker. And we'll meet next quarter.
Great, thank you so much. We did have a Finance Committee meeting, but we will be discussing those two items later on in the agenda. So we'll just, I'll just leave it to later on to when those come up. Anybody else? All right, we will move on to public participation. I'm going to start here for anybody wants to speak, and then I will move to the phone. Go ahead.
Good evening. Marie Blake, 359 Wheeler Road. I have been a town resident for over 50 years. I identify myself with many roles. Wife, mom, teacher, advocate, rule follower, the list goes on. When you meet with me or speak to me, it's all of me. I don't take one hat off and put another hat on. I have attended many Board of Education meetings and am well aware of the rules of public participation. Although I posed questions in my comment two weeks ago, I did not expect answers right then and there. They were rhetorical questions, which is a device used to engage the audience in active listening. It is a device used to highlight a point being made. Last week, my questions were rhetorical in nature. At the last meeting, you entertained whether or not my comments were in some way trying to negotiate with the board. In my comments, I simply delineated instances where money was being spent. I had four points, three of which were already made public at various meetings. Over the course of the years, I have served as the Chair of Negotiations. As a matter of fact, many of you here on the Board sat on those committees with me on the other side, but we were together at the table. There are rules that prohibit discussion of the terms while the process is ongoing, negotiation. The MOU in question, the one about furlough days, was signed, and there is nothing to prohibit the discussion of it. As a matter of fact, it was quoted in the Monroe Sun. I was not negotiating, nor was I bringing forth a grievance. The definition of a grievance is in our contract, as is the grievance procedure. I respect the Board and the process of public participation, which allows me, in my multifaceted roles, to approach the Board and share thoughts or concerns as an individual and as an elected union leader. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul, is there anybody online? Okay, thank you. So we will move then on to the report of our Acting Superintendent.
Thanks. Our first, first order business is to look at the projected fiscal year 21 year-to-date budget report. Just before Ron does that, as we're talking about finances, I did want to offer some clarifications on comments that were made last week regarding the furlough days and just make sure everyone is on the same page. And I've had these conversations with other people as well. When we, when Ron calculated the money saved for furlough days, he broke it down by bargain unit. And when we look at the MEA portion of the, of the furlough days, Ron calculated roughly about $140,000 a day for the, for the MEA portion, totaling about $420,000. If you remember, we reduced a number of positions last year. Some, you know, were retirements that we didn't backfill. Others, where we replaced, you know, classroom teachers for reading specialists. And then others, we just simply, you know, didn't fill. Even with that, we were in kind of a crummy position to have to, we were going to be reducing five current teachers, five, you know, five teachers already at our bargain unit. With the furlough days, we were able to save those five positions. And when you, and when you add the salary of the benefits, I'm sorry, when you add the salary and the benefits of those five teachers, it comes up to just about $423,000. That's before the, that's before the addition of the instructional supplies for the culinary class, which was also added too. I think that was approximately another $10,000. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Another piece that was also brought up was some of the work that was done by John Batista and where that money, you know, maybe where that money came from. And I just wanted to address that as well. You know, when Dr. Greenwood left on August 1st, you know, we were going to be without a high school principal. And I think in a normal summer, we might've said, okay, you know, maybe, you know, the two assistant principals can ride the ship. But we were coming into, you know, we were building reopening plans. We had a lot of stuff going on. And quite honestly, we needed someone to kind of man the ship until we got someone on. And we were fortunate that Steve was able to join as quickly as, as he did. You know, following some of that work, John also worked with Jack, Jack and I up at Central Office, because we had gotten, you know, a really large number of leave requests. And the, the government was passing out all kinds of new guidance on, you know, FMLA and the Family's First Coronavirus Relief Act. There was, there was a lot of work to be done. You know, I think it's important to note, you know, in our discussions, Ron and I had, and really Ron was the one that pointed out, is, you know, we've always looked at using grant funds, not operational expenditures if we can, to cover the work that John did with us, because we do believe that that work was COVID-related. So we're hoping between the CARES Act and/or the Coronavirus Relief Fund, that we'll be able to cover both those costs. And then the last piece, I know there was questions about the, you know, some of the math work that was being done. And that too was a piece that we were trying to capture in the Title II grant. So I just, I just wanted to, you know, just offer some, some pieces of clarification. Just another quick update on, on other work being done outside of the budget. I said during the Finance Department meeting, Sheila, Jack, Ron and I have been working, you know, quite a bit on allocations of the CARES Act and the Coronavirus Relief Fund. The, the state keeps changing the parameters for the allocations, and we're working as hard as we can to try to maximize both funds. I think the CARES Act is roughly $115,000, and the Coronavirus Relief, Relief Fund is $800,000. But they, they're very specific in what you can use the money for, and sometimes very limited. And for example, the Coronavirus Relief Funds has to be, the funds are to be used to cover expenses incurred by December 31st. So we have a lot of work to do to do that. It's not, it's not for the entire, not for the entire school year. That may change, the, the allocations have changed a couple, the way we could allocate the money has changed a little bit, and they have provided some more flexibility. The one area where they do not want to see people reducing from is in cleaning, health, PPE, and safety. So, and we're trying to maximize that with all kinds of, all kinds of stuff. So just a couple of quick finance pieces before I turn it over to Ron to, to do the year-to-date budget report.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, Ron. Oh, well, actually, does anybody have any questions for Joe? Alan?
Yeah, I was just wondering if we could just expand a little bit on the health and safety in the buildings, like what's being done in terms of like cleaning and that sort of thing?
I can, Alan. Do you want to, do you want to wait until we get to, because it really, a lot of it is going to be update to decision. It doesn't really sound like it would be, but it could, I think I might pick up some of that there.
No problem.
And then if I don't answer it then, I think it makes sense to talk about it there.
Okay.
Anybody have anything else? All right, Ron, you are up.
Okay, but before I get going on the year-to-date budget report, I just wanted to mention, one, one of the things that's been difficult through the grant filing process is the change in guidance. You know, we filed the CARES Act report. The next day, we got, we were made aware of the Coronavirus Relief Fund, which required us to amend the CARES Act. So it was, it's been a fluid situation. And then actually, they let us amend our initial filing of the Coronavirus Relief Fund grant. So it's, both grants have actually been filed twice. And it's not, it was, it wasn't our doing. It was just, you know, add new guidance along the way. So to circle back to the year-to-date budget report, as I stated earlier in our Finance Committee meeting, the only point of concern on the budget right now is unemployment compensation. And it's, it's, we are over budget. There's a couple of reasons for that. There were claims filed over the summer that will likely be challenged, because as, as a board of that employee, if you're under contract and you're, and you work both ends of, you know, one school year and the other school year, you can't collect unemployment over the summer. So there's some claims there that need to be addressed. And there were also, there were legitimate claims. We are self-employed, so somebody who may have lost their job and couldn't get re-employed can collect on the district if they're working in another district. And, and that happened in a couple of cases. Other than that, at this point, everything is, is tracking fine. I did, I did get a chance to go through the, the way our health insurance is tracking this year, and we're, we're okay. We're within a half of a percent of budget.
On which side? Could you just clarify to the, to the Board and also people in the audience regarding unemployment? The way it works, if somebody leaves your district, they can go back 18 months, so...
I believe it's five, I think five quarters.
Right. So if the person left, let's say, at the end of June, started a new position, lost that position, we get hit for, for that because of us being self-employed with regard to unemployment, unlike a regular employer, you would pay unemployment tax to the state. The state would pick that up. It's actually on the districts.
Correct.
So that people understand that. It's, it's different than the way it works in the private sector. Yes.
For the health insurance, because it was a big change for us from going from self-funded to the state, it's projecting within a half a percent of where we thought we would be.
Of, of the budget right now, yes.
We're slightly over?
We're slightly over.
Slightly over, okay. But it's, it's...
Which is not reflected in this, I did the work over the weekend, so before this got in your pack, or after this got in your pack, so.
So far, so good on the state plan, or?
Please don't jinx us.
And again, there's always going to be fluctuations. You have employees come and go, so, you know, they change, you know, they, someone may have left, they may have been on, on the single plan. Someone new comes in, they're on the family plan, so it, you know.
Right.
You do build in a little bit of a contingency for that.
Like somebody has a baby mid-year, they switch plans.
Right.
Nick?
So this, I think we talked last meeting, this is going to be every, once a month? Every other meeting?
I'll probably go every other meeting, because we do the normal fund statement, which, which will be up through, it'll be next meeting through September 30th?
No, I was just going to say that, I was going to compliment you that I think this is really helpful. First of all, I think this is much clearer than the Munis reports. Not that the Munis reports don't have their place, I know they do, but this is much clearer. And I think last year, and perhaps the year before, I felt like sometimes we would come to a meeting and we would be surprised by something. We would find something out at the meeting that we were told that was building up from months before, and now there can't be that. Because if we're getting this every month, like the unemployment insurance now, we all kind of have a flag and we have an explanation. Okay, next month, something's over by 5%. We have a flag and an explanation. And now, every month, we get to kind of go through, you know, three succinct pages and can check off each red flag. So it's a lot easier to track month to month, I think.
I like it as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes?
On the unemployment, should we purchase insurance? And would that be less costly or no?
I don't think so. I think that, that's, I think that's just the way municipalities are, are done.
Yeah, and the, the town has the same exposure.
Okay.
No, but like as Ron mentioned, some of them, we, Ron feels that need to be contested, that they shouldn't have come to us and that, you know, so this could be changed.
And HR is working, working through that.
Yeah, so we'll probably see next month that could be adjusted, hopefully.
Yeah, it depends how quickly the state acts on it.
Right. Yeah, exactly.
So maybe not next month, but maybe by June.
I don't want to promise anything there.
But it also allows, once we know that sooner, it allows us to change tact quicker instead of...
Absolutely.
May.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it allows us to plan and figure it out before we're scrambling at the end of the year. So you're absolutely correct.
So the, the only other thing I wanted to mention, it's not part of the budget and never has been, is the, the potential food service exposure.
Oh, okay. Yeah, where do we stand on that?
So I think our game plan is to have Alan come to the next meeting.
Next meeting. We're meeting with, we're meeting with...
We're meeting him at the, with him at the end of the week, so.
Has that contract been reviewed? Like our contract with Sedexo is...
Yeah, I mean, we're in a, we're in a very similar situation as a number of other districts. A lot of, all the superintendents I'm talking to are in the same spot with their food service companies. It's not, it's a, it's a revenue problem right now for these folks.
And the way the contracts are worded is...
I mean, there's certain, yeah, there's certain indicators that they're supposed, we're supposed to guarantee that we can't right now. We can't guarantee that they're going to have, you know, it says, I think, something like 3,200 kids per day. We don't have that.
But last year, when we had the free lunches, we, is there any way to like model what we did last year for this school year so that we don't have that exposure? Kids have lunches who might otherwise, might not, is there any way to like...
That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to maximize the free lunches as much as possible. We're trying to work with them as, as, as much as possible to advertise that, get that out, get kids to get free lunches to help reduce that exposure.
Like last year when we were fully remote, we had parents picking them up at one of the schools, like, that, that could be a win-win-win.
Well, for, for the schools, they are getting free lunch.
Yeah.
So the, the four schools that are on the National School Lunch Program are currently get, you can get free lunch, but that money is being re, re, I'm sorry.
Reimbursed?
Reimbursed, thank you, from the Department of Agriculture. I don't know how many people are taking advantage of that for their kids, but they, everybody, all three elementary schools and the middle school can all get free lunch.
Any, but, any student?
Any student.
That's a big deal.
Yes.
That's a big deal. Does, I wonder if the parents at home know that?
We're, we've messaged it.
It, we're getting them.
I only have a high schooler right now, so...
So those four schools, everybody's getting free lunch at the, if, that want it. Now, I, I, we can't control if the kids...
Can we put that on our social media page?
Absolutely.
Sometimes like, there's like memes out there, like that, there's so many, and it's nobody's fault. It's, it's the nature of what our situation is this year. But there's so many, somebody, the memes are like, I'm going to quit my job so I could read this, my kid's school's emails full-time, you know? So, so if, if there's a different way to get that message out there, like if, because I haven't heard that buzz, if, if all of the elementary schools and middle school parents and kids know, hey, hot lunch is free.
Yep.
That could help them and us.
And, and what helped us a little bit last year too, is we had the, the free lunches and they were able to go out. We had significantly less overhead too. There's, we only had, you know, there was two, two people in, plus Horacio, at, just at Jackie Hollow.
Yeah, it was well advertised last year.
It was.
I mean, there has been stuff that's gone home.
We can keep sending it out. I mean, that's, and that's what we're...
Unless they just, the parents didn't understand that it was for everybody.
Yeah.
I don't know.
It's also available.
Or at least I bet some parents at least probably don't, didn't get that, you know, and that's a, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we'll, we'll send it.
It's like, yeah, like, but if we put it on social media and the Monroe Parents page and stuff, that could...
There's no sign up.
There's no sign up. Your kid just orders lunch. Order hot lunch and that's it.
What if they're, my, my son would order probably a whole bunch of lunches, but is there, for the kids who are on remote days, like the pickup like we have last year?
Yes, yes.
That's, remotes also available to the high school.
Yes.
So they can, they can...
Yep.
But even though the high school isn't on the plan?
It's, it's based on where the meals are prepared and picked up. So, and the meal, meal is being prepared and picked up at Font Hollow, so as long as you're a student in the district and under 18, you can, you can order and pick up there. And that is all delineated in the, we can send it up every time.
That's great. The Monroe Sun, if you're listening.
Maybe we need to, maybe we need to promote it some more.
Well, that's, I think that's going to be part of the conversation on Friday too. And I know that was part of their strategy with that QR code and whatnot, just to try to find other ways to just, you know, promote their, promote their stuff.
But, yeah.
I think that was it from my end.
Anybody have any other questions for Ron before we move on? Thank you, Ron. I mean, from my standpoint, I think the new projections are, as Nick mentioned, fantastic. Really, it's putting us in a good position to know where we are. And making, being able to make decisions on that.
Yeah, and if we do say we didn't know about it, you can just have the stack of spreadsheets from months before and go, oh, well, let's just take a look. Ron would do that. I would do that.
Much appreciated.
Alrighty.
All right, I just wanted to just talk about a bit, and I, Alan, I think this can dovetail into some of the conversation about cleaning. And this is the update to the decision-making guidelines for the instructional model. You know, when we, when we first started this summer, the state of Connecticut put out a framework. It was called Adapt, Advance, Achieve: Connecticut's Plan to reopen their schools. The State Department of Education with the Department of Public Health put out guidance for districts to follow to work through their reopening plans. You know, a lot of the stuff that we're familiar with, kids should wear masks, you know, get hand sanitizer, enhance your cleaning protocols, you know, fix any ventilation issues that you may have, all that kind of stuff. Ever since that initial document came out, the state has sent out addendums on particular topics, you know, on a whole bunch of different things. Addendum four is the guidance for decision-making regarding the use of in-person, hybrid, or remote learning models in school. That was sent out on August 3rd, and then it was just updated August 21st. And we received it just about a week ago, a little, a little over a week ago. So I had, I had spoken to you all about, hey, here's what we're looking at, here's the metrics. Remember, we talked about the number of new COVID cases, percent positivity rate, number of COVID-19 hospitalizations, number of COVID-like or flu-like hospital visits. All of that, all of those indicators have stayed the same. One change the Department of Public Health has made to that is they were over a rolling seven-day average, now they're over a rolling 14-day average. And I get those numbers every, I don't get, I mean, everyone, anyone gets them. I can share the, the link with you. It's a, it's a public website, anyone can, anyone can get access to. And we get those updates every Thursday, and it includes the two prior weeks from the Sunday, from the Sunday before. So, like I said, initially, when we looked at it, there were, it was much more defined in terms of, hey, if this is the scenario, if we have less than, if we have zero to 10 cases, we should be in school. If we have 10 to 25, we should be hybrid. If we're 25 and more, we should be remote. Now, if you, if you, even if you look at the guidance, they have kind of gradations to it, where it's kind of like yellow, yellow is orange, orange, orangish-red, and, and red and whatnot. So there's, there's kind of two important pieces to look at for the new guidance that just came out last week. It still looks at the indicators of community spread. But it also couples that with the district's ability to implement its mitigation. But it also couples that with the district's ability to implement its mitigation strategies, okay? How well, you know, we have ki, and, and so far, you know, in that respect, you know, we've been pretty good with, you know, kids wearing masks, hand sanitizer, you know, hand washing stations outside, you know, all the things that, all the mitigation strategies that we've talked out, talked about before. So it says, look at those two things. But then it also talks about the decision-making, should take these factors into consideration in consultation with the local health department, the school medical advi, your school medical advisor, and community leaders as well. So it's a, it's a much more holistic way of look, looking at, you know, how, what we're doing with this information and, you know, making decisions on it. I don't want anyone to think that I'm, you know, I'm, I'm sitting somewhere making all the decisions on what has to happen. These decisions are, are, you know, they're consensus-based decisions, they're decisions with input from a lot of people. So, you know, currently, every, every Tuesday, I have a standing meeting with the State Department of Education, oh, not, not, I don't, not me personally, it's a standing, the, the, the State Department of Education and the Connecticut Department of Public Health invite every superintendent in the, in the state, and there's usually, and their, and their health directors, there's usually about four hundred people on, on every call, every, every Tuesday. So I'm on with the State Department of Education, Department of Public Health every Tuesday, just going over the latest information, guidelines, and whatnot. Under this new model as well, Jack, uh, Jack and I now have a standing meeting every Friday because the metrics come out on Thursday. So starting last Friday, when these new metrics started coming out, we, we organized a meeting with Dr. Dion, who is our school medical advisor, and who's also an infectious disease expert, that's his area of expertise. Nancy Braw, our, our health director, Heather Henning, our public health nurse, and Joanne Perrig, our nurse advisor. So any decision that we make to move models is, is gonna be base, is gonna be a collaborative decision with input from these folks, and I really am gonna rely heavily on those folks. You know, we met last Friday, and as we've seen, the numbers are, the numbers are starting to tick up. But, you know, what we are not seeing is, we're not seeing spread in the schools, which is why it was part of the decision last Friday to stay the course that we're on right now. We're seeing numbers tick up, but we're not seeing transmission from students to students, or, or adults to students, or students to adults. We'll meet again this Friday if necessary. I just want to read apart from the addendum that talks about that, that transmission. And this, again, this is coming from the Department of Public Health. The, and, and, you know, they talk about their experience in the state. I think we're also seeing this on a, on a national level too. They wrote, "The experience in our state since school reopening began indicates that transmission has been a rare event inside of school buildings, even in communities with elevated transmission rates, likely due to the high level of planning and compliance with mitigation strategies designed to prevent transmission between individuals. This same level of planning and compliance is not necessarily in place in other settings outside of the school buildings, and so engagement in general community activities requires more, more caution." You know, I, I just think it's important, and I keep telling everyone, this is what we're seeing right now, as of right now, and I, I qualify it every time someone says it, and we're gonna have cases, we know that. We know more cases as we go into the winter, cases are gonna go up, we're gonna continue to meet, and if the metrics change, or if we're starting to see something really, you know, significantly impacting our school population, you know, we're gonna make adjustments. We're not just, we're not gonna wait for Fridays to do that. There, you know, Dr. Dion is awesome, you know, all the other folks are great on, on getting, getting on there. But, you know, we're gonna continue to seek advice and input from these groups as we make, as we make decisions. So, in addition to all that, and I, and I keep, like I said, I keep qualifying it with like, this is what we're seeing right now, in the state, in the nation, whatever, it could change, but, you know, as of, you know, I keep saying, as of eight oh five on November second, we're not seeing transmission throughout, in the schools. It's not, we're not seeing spread in the schools. It's not, those aren't spreading events. And who knows, if that changes, we're, obviously, you know, we're preparing ourselves to change with that, and that's why we, we created a plan in the beginning of the year that allows us to move between in-person, hybrid, and remote instruction. You know, in addition, I'll be walking with, with Nancy Braw this week. We're gonna be going into the schools. While the schools are in session, I, I want the health department to see, you know, what does school look like? What does it look like at the elementary with, you know, eighteen, nineteen kids in a classroom? You know, what does it look like at the high school during lunchtime and whatnot? So Nancy and I are gonna be, you know, just visiting the various schools this week. I wanna just, just talk a little bit on, on contact tracing, so people, you know, try to demystify that a little bit and understand how that process happens. You know, usually one of two things happen. Either the health department notifies us that someone has tested positive, because any, any positive result gets reported to the health department. That's one way we can get notified. The other way we can get notified is, I'm sorry, the other way notification happens is parents are calling us and telling us they just got a positive result. That's the more likely of the two, two things, and that's usually the quicker of the two things. We're usually hearing from parents first before the, you know, before the health department gets the, gets the results. When that happens, we have the, we ask the health department to do the initial interview with the COVID case. So whether it's a staff member or it's a student, we have them contact the family or the staff member, talk to them, and do the initial contact tracing. And then, you know, quite, quite frankly, and much of, you know, Jack and I's weekend was spent contact tracing and calling families and, and whatnot. You know, once they give us the, um, once they give us the parameters on when the person became contagious and whatnot, we assist with the contact tracing. And, and quite honestly, they don't have the capacity to do it. They don't understand our schedules. They don't, you know, we had a situation at Masick, I had Steve pull, you know, the bus runs, the lunch schedule, the, the class schedules, and, and, you know, all that kind of stuff. I, I think it's important to understand what a close contact is, and I want to give you a couple of examples, how, you know, I sent out two emails that I said last week had really cognitive dissonance to them. Because last week I sent out two emails, if you remember, both of them, the, the individual, and, and again, I'm being very careful with how I report out, and I know that's frustrating for some folks. They wanna know, was it a staff member, was it a student? Some districts are handling it differently. Some, it's, it's obvious who it is, and that's why they're doing that, and some are handling it like we're doing it. But, um, we had, we had a situation where we had, the last time the individual was in school was on Tuesday. In both situations, the last time they were in school was on Tuesday. In one situation, if you read through, it said, "We've identified all of the close contacts, and we've, you know, and we've given them the recommendations for quarantine, because if you're a close contact, you have to quarantine for a specified period." In the other one, I wrote, "The, the health department has determined there's no close contacts." So if you're rationally looking at this thing, and you're thinking, well, how could that be? That makes no sense. How could I have, how could I have close contacts? You, both, both people were in school on the same day. How could one have close contacts? How could one, one not? You have to understand the definition of a close contact. A close contact is someone that the CDC says is within six feet for fifteen minutes or more cumulative time over a twenty-four hour period. So if it's five minutes, five minutes, five minutes, that's fifteen minutes. Doesn't have to be fifteen straight minutes. The other piece is understanding when it starts, and it starts forty-eight hours before the first of two things, okay, whichever comes first. Either the onset of symptoms, which is normally what happens, or the test collection date, okay? So let's go back to that, those two scenarios. We have a, um, we have a, two individuals that were in school on Tuesday. Hadn't been in school, and then now we were, I wrote that over the weekend, and on, I'm sorry, on Monday, we, we wrote that. One situation, started getting symptoms on Wednesday, took a test, got the results back on Saturday, informed the school, you know. Now, we look back forty-eight hours prior to the onset of symptoms. Symptoms started Wednesday, so that's Monday and Tuesday. It's, it's gonna capture Monday and Tuesday. So there, we have to, we have to contact trace for that. Other, other person, in school on Tuesday, that was her last day in school, started getting symptoms on Sunday, tested and got a result back either Sunday or Monday, whatever it was, and we got the result. So now if you go back two days from Sunday, that was Friday. They weren't in school. They weren't in school Thursday, they weren't in school on Wednesday, they weren't in school since Tuesday. So that's how you can get a situation where you have, you know, it sounds like the exact same thing going on, but we end up with, with, with two different results. You know, like I said, there's a, there's a, you know, I worked with the high school staff, the elementary staff, you know, all weekend, you know, doing the contact tracing. You know, we have to find out, if it's a student, did they take the bus? Where do they sit in the cafeteria? Can we pull the cafeteria video? Can we see? You know, we asked them, you know, who might you have sat next to, and then we look at the video, did they, you know, did they sit next to that person? We're asking teachers to do one of two things, either keep seating charts, or a lot of teachers just find it easier to just snap a picture of their class when they, when the kids come in to sit down. So they know where everybody sits, and we can just, you know, you know, take a look at it. So it is, um, you know, I, I just wanted to explain the process, and I think, you know, this is where Alan, you know, if we talk about cleaning in the buildings, you know, we've, we've made a concerted effort to, you know, I, I think I've said before, we're trying to avoid the term, because it's not, it's disingenuous. Deep cleaning, a deep cleaning day. You know, we, we are talking about enhanced cleaning protocols every day. So, you know, one of the ways, a couple of the ways that we've taught, that we've addressed that is, we've gone out and hired, you know, what I'm calling the sanitizers. Every building has someone in the building for, I think it's four hours a day, and they go around, they have, they have a disinfectant, and they are, all, most, most of their time is consumed just going around the building, hitting railings, doorknobs, door handles, the main doors, wiping down the, the flushers on the toilets for, for students. You know, we are cleaning the bathrooms twice a day, and then at night, and I, I verified this with all the elementary, I know that they were doing this at the high school, they are sanitizing the desks every night as well. And that's, we have, there's a, it's called Dual Blend Number Nineteen, is the, is the product that they're using that's supposed to kill ninety-nine point nine percent of viruses, including the, the coronavirus. So they're going around at night and just, and all you do with that, you spray the desk down. And you just, there's a dwell time on it, you just let it sit on the desk, and it kills the, it kills the bacteria. So, you know, there's a, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of things going on. I don't know if I, did I miss anything else, Jack, for cleaning? Jer?
Joe, two questions. So, um, if it was found out through contact tracing that a teacher might have it, what's the procedure for that teacher quarantining? How long?
Yep.
And does it come out of sick time? Explain.
Yeah, good questions, Jer. Um, the, uh, so if, if, if a teach, if a staff member needs to be quarantined, you know, and we're working with the, we're working with the union right now to, to address this. What we wanna be able to do is, we're gonna have to hire a sub anyway for the class. I would rather the person not supplement their sick time with it, because they could use the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act, and they could use that, if they use that up, they're gonna use that up, and then they more than likely might have to supplement that with their sick time. So what we're saying is if you're in a short-term quarantine, not that you're, you're not, you're not necessarily sick, but you've been forced to quarantine,
Right.
we wanna give you the opportunity to teach remotely
Okay.
to, to your students. So, you know, we're gonna have to call a sub in anyway, who's better equipped to, to teach with those people. And now, now this way, they don't need to use, they don't need to use their, their sick time.
Awesome, and then how?
And if their class is, if their class is fully remote because of it, you know, even more so, it makes more sense to do that.
How, how long, Joe?
Oh, yeah, that was the other question, sorry.
How long, uh, do they, I mean, you know, in cer, certain instances, we, we've heard that teachers in certain towns have been out for three days, and if they test negative, they can go back in. What's our?
Yep, nope, the, uh, testing is not a, is not an option for quarantine. The, you are quarantined, uh, and Jack, if I get this wrong, I always, I always resort to the, I always defer, we have a little, and I should have brought it tonight. I have a little, like, fill-in-the-blank sheet that said, when I, when we call parents, that says, hey, were you in school on November twenty-sixth? Okay, you were, then, or your child was? Okay, then they were considered a close contact. They will be in quarantine through November eleventh, they can return to school November twelfth. I get those, I get those days specifically from the health department, because I think it depends on when your last exposure to the person was. It goes fourteen days from your last exposure. So.
Thanks, Joe, that helped, helped a lot.
Does anybody have questions on that for Joe? I know that was a lot of information.
It's a lot, it's a lot.
And it's confusing, too.
It is, and it, and, you know, the, the one thing we've said is that, you know, everything's, it's changing.
Ever-changing.
The addendum changed again, and, you know, I think that's, you know, it's nerve-wracking.
David?
Thanks, Alan. I just, I drove by corporate office on Saturday, as you know. I drove by corporate office on Sunday, and the lights were on, the cars were out front, and I just wanted to say to, to Joe and to staff and to everybody, phenomenal job, keep up the good work, we're proud of you. It's, it's not easy, you know, coming in on weekends and all that, so just a big thank you. It was very noticeable this weekend. It was, there was somebody there all weekend long, so just thank you.
Thanks, David.
Nick?
I just want to add very briefly too, I think the plant, the way you explained it, and also the plan that you showed us at the last meeting about the, actually, I think the plan starts this week with Election Day and into next week.
Yep.
I think the plan and what you just said strikes a good balance, because I did have a couple, um, conversations, conversations with parents talking about, well, the cases are gonna go up. And my thing is that even though cases are going up as testing goes up, it's the positivity rate, right? So you could have one percent positivity or six percent positivity, but the cases are gonna go in the same direction. So I think what we're doing here in our district, especially hearing, answering Jerry's question about remote learning for teachers who are quarantined, which is, I think, really important about continuity of instruction for the students, it's about striking a balance. Even if there's not transmission student to student, as you said, which I believe is true, there's possible transmission at home. A student could bring it home to someone who's in the high-risk group, or could bring it somewhere else. And we saw across the state, and I was watching the governor's press conference today about, you know, rolling back to phase two and all this kind of stuff. He even said that transmission is not happening in schools, it could happen in schoolchildren at events that they're going to outside the schoolhouse.
That's what we're seeing.
And so I think with the cleaning protocols you talked about, and the planning of the weeks, and the ability to be flexible, I know the reopening committee did so much work over the summer on being able to pick a plan off the shelf and go with it. So I think, I, I feel like we're prepared for whatever the next couple of months brings us.
And there is a little confusion with the, um, you know, and I don't know why really they did this, but we have, you know, this yellow, orange, red, and the, you know, you have the state map that gives you the, you know, the, the metrics, and, and they're using yellow, orange, and red. But the, um, it's being used for the towns, and it's, and the, the metrics don't actually add, match up with the, not that the metrics don't add up, but the, um, like, you get into the red, for the town-wide COVID alert system, you get into the red at fifteen, where in here, they're talking about, like, you're, when you're in the dark red, it's at twenty-five. So it is, you know, I don't know why they did that, I don't know why they didn't, you know, streamline the, you know, the municipalities and the, uh, school districts a little bit. Jer?
Since we've had snow in October, did the governor say, or does the state level say anything about?
You probably didn't get it, since you were having problems with your email, your Board of Ed email, but that came out last week, and I had sent that out, the letter from the, the commissioner to everybody, but because of your, I forgot about that one.
My Wi-Fi crashed daily, and then I tried to re-log in too many times, and it shut me out, and I was out for a while. So what, so what are they saying about snow days?
We have that, we have.
Oh, okay, alright.
Joe, we, we're still on schedule for next week for the feedings?
Yeah, yep.
That's good. I know a lot of kids are looking forward to that and need it.
Yeah.
And they put, the map they put out, they have yellow, orange, red, but the towns that are okay are in gray, they're not in green.
I know.
So you look at this map of yellow, orange, red, and you think, oh my gosh, because those are the bad colors, right, like a stoplight?
Yep.
Good towns should be in green.
I know.
I'm gonna text the commissioner.
Yep.
I give you some.
Aren't they still, aren't they still considering, um, out-of-state college kids?
Oh, that got all messed up, right? That's like.
So that could falsely inflate our numbers, which affects decision-making, so.
Well, it happened in Fairfield. I mean, Fairfield, the Fairfield Public Schools pushed back reopening because of the Fairfield juice spike, and
Right.
I could do a whole half an hour on that, I won't, but.
But didn't Oxford, didn't Oxford just shut? Didn't they go to full remote?
I think they did. I don't know for how long. And, and I'll be honest with you, what might end up getting us, two things might end up getting us. And I don't know if it's gonna lead to a full two-week shutdown, or whatever, you know, for the whole quarantine or whatever, but where people are starting to get killed is in, doing the contact tracing. It's just, you know, we've been.
It's overwhelming.
Knock on wood, you know. It's been overwhelming, but at least been ones that we've been able to, you know, you know, get a pretty good grip on. But once you get one of these ones that, you know, this person, that person, this, you know, and it's starting.
I only throw out Oxford, because there's no college community. There's no, I mean, it's the hills, baby, it's cows and.
If your child is away at college and they test positive, it's hitting against.
Right, because you're coming, right, yes.
Right, even though they're not here, it's still counting against you here, even if they're in like Wisconsin.
Gotcha.
The other thing that, you know, I worry about the, is if we get to a point where staffing just becomes an issue.
Joe, I'm not too excited to go back, so I understand. I'm still on the fence.
No, no, no.
I'm not Nick, or I'm ready to, I'm still on the fence.
I hear you.
I said we were prepared.
Yeah, we are prepared, I'm just not excited as you are.
Read the record back.
No, I'm just saying, what, my, you know. No, I'm just saying, what might, you know, with the contact tracing and then just staffing in general might, might be reasons why we end up going remote, is that we just don't have the subs to, you know, if we get, if we get to a point where.
Other towns have done that because of that reason.
Yep, yeah, that's not, yeah, I mean, I know, you know, Shelton didn't have enough bus drivers to get their kids to school.
Yeah, that's a big problem, I know.
And you're also balancing, you know, I know that parents continue to say, seeing their children in school, they see the difference between when their kids go to school and when they're remote learning, but as a public school district, we also have to balance that with providing a free and appropriate education. So when staffing is not there, what, I mean, you can't provide the instruction of that, of that, at that level, what do you do?
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody else before Joe moves on?
The other one should be pretty quick. I just wanna, the enrollment surveys, I just wanna thank Jack, Jack and Teresa Coleman worked to get the, a survey, I don't know if enrollment survey is the, the correct word, but it went out on School Messenger, you may have seen it go on School Messenger, but then we also asked Parents Council if they could get it out, and I think someone got it out on social media, on a couple of different sites on social media. Again, this is, we're trying to pick up those families who have kids that are school-aged children that will be joining us next year that we're not picking up now, so this could be the homeschool kids, or more specifically, what I was worried about was the kids who are not in kindergarten this year, that could have been in kindergarten this year, so we're trying to capture as much of that as we can as we, as we go into budget season. So that closes on Wednesday, we're gonna take a look at it, you know, Jack had quite a few responses, probably too many, which indicates that some people didn't understand the, the survey, so we could, we'll do a cross-reference between our database and, you know, obviously we'll throw out anyone who's already in the system. You know, we don't need to capture them, they're already captured. I just want to remind you, Dave, I think you brought, someone brought this up already, just a reminder that we're, you know, we're moving the, the start times up approximately 15 minutes at the schools. Right now, the mornings, it's a lot of, a lot of, you know, kind of downtime in the, in the morning, we can pick up some instructional time in each of the buildings, it's just a matter of, you know, having the buses start about 10 or 15 minutes earlier.
And that's in all the schools?
That's in all the schools.
Okay, and that'll be sent out?
That'll be sent out by the, by the individual principals, yeah.
What date does that start?
Monday, next, next Monday, yeah.
I, I got it, I got it.
Okay, I didn't, well, well, not for elementary, I mean, I don't pay attention, sorry, Steve, to high school, because she's self-sufficient and shouldn't understand what she needs to do.
It's gonna be, at the elementary, you know, the way I understand it, it's, it's gonna be more of an issue with the buses, not an issue for the buses, but it's just more of getting the buses there. I think the drop-offs, people are getting there at that time, it's just that the school buses are, so if you're dropping your kid off, your kids get dropped off and sitting in class for 15 minutes waiting for the school bus to arrive for those kids, those kids to arrive.
So they'll probably be like 10 minutes earlier?
So the school bus will be earlier, yeah.
And I've already given you my child's objection to the 15 minutes earlier. That would be the high school one.
Objection noted.
So buses are coming 15 minutes earlier?
Yeah. The snow days, just to Shannon's question before, the, you know, the state did release new guidance last week on, on some possible flexibility to allow for remote learning days in lieu of snow days. As of right now, that, you know, that, that permission, if you, if you saw Donna's email, that's, that's only in play for this school year, but this could be the, you know, this could be a, you know, an impetus for change moving forward. You know, there's something.
Nick has a question.
I have a question, I, are we gonna keep?
Yeah, let me, there's just a, you know, there are some, the, you know, on the face of it, and now we, all of a sudden, last week, I'm getting, you know, our weatherman sends us these emails and, you know, beginning of the week, it's like, it gets more alarming as the week's going on, and all of a sudden, it's like, okay, we need a 425 call tomorrow morning, I'm like, oh no, like, oh, are we gonna be canceling school? This would be horrible. You know, you know, I would never have been able to, like, say, okay, remote day, because we weren't prepared for it, kids didn't have devices, teachers didn't have their laptops, I mean, it would have been, it would have been a nightmare. You know, there's obviously some logistics that we're gonna have to figure out, I don't know, I'm trying to see if there's any guidance or parameters around, you know, I mean, A, we're gonna need to make sure kids have technology, which we know, we can, we can, you know, between what the kids already have and what we could supplement, we could have kids on a one-to-one, obviously, we would have to tell them ahead of time, hey, you know, make sure you bring home your laptop. A couple of other things, we'd have to, you know, one of the things they don't want us doing is, we get a power situation, we get a snow day and power gets knocked out, which in October, you know, that's what happened years ago, because everything's so heavy at that time. You know, obviously, if we've got something that's gonna prevent kids or teachers from accessing and logging on, we wouldn't be able to do that, we gotta figure out how to track student attendance, you know, those are just a few, few things that we're gonna start addressing this week with the administrative team on Thursday, like, what is, what is a snow day going to look like? You know, what's the schedule gonna look like? Now, I imagine it'll look a lot like a remote learning day, but there's, it's not just as ma, it's not just as easy as, you know, flipping a switch.
That's a good start.
It is, it is. And my last piece is just tomorrow's Election Day, it's our professional development day, I think it's a, it'll be some very much-needed time for our teachers to, to collaborate and work together and, you know, you know, I've said it a million times, I, I know I can never say it enough, but they're working incredibly hard and this will be a really important time for them tomorrow.
Can I just ask a question about, just one concern I had about snow days.
Uh-huh.
I know you addressed the scheduling, you'd have to figure out if there, if it was a remote day. I guess my only concern about snow days being a remote learning day is the timing of your call.
Mm-hmm.
So like, I tried to put myself in the shoes of a teacher, and I live with a teacher, so we had this discussion over dinner before the meeting, and he said, you gotta ask these questions. I was like, okay, let me write them down. You know, if you're a teacher and you go to sleep and you are thinking you're going to the schoolhouse the next day to teach your lessons in a particular way, and the phone call comes at 5:15 in the morning, we're going to a snow day and it's remote, you now have two hours or less than that to pivot your day to remote learning. So that, you know, the good ones are when you go to bed and it's closed.
Yeah.
Because then, you know, five feet's coming and whatever, but there's a lot of, most of them are not like that.
Yeah.
So I guess it's just the timing of the call for the teaching staff is, I think, gonna be the most logistically challenging portion of this.
I appreciate that, Nick, that's, that's really good advice and that's gonna save me a 425 phone call, because I'll make it the night before.
And the parents, too, and the parents of young kids who maybe have to figure out childcare or something, you know, or change the, a plan for the kids.
Right, and if they're saying, hey, listen, if the weather forecast and the meteorologist is saying, hey, listen, we're looking at a storm, we don't know when it's, you know, starting, but we think it's gonna be a couple of inches, might as well just, if, if it, if we don't have to make it up, call it the night before.
And that would be.
Have everybody prepared, it's not like it's gonna be like, oh, all of a sudden tomorrow we wake up and we had no idea that there's five inches on the ground, I mean, we're gonna have some indication.
And we all know Mother Nature sometimes has a mind of her own and is not exactly predictable, so when we try to, like, keep into, you know, be considerate of, like, the teachers and the parents and stuff and make it the night before, and then the weather doesn't come out as planned, don't, you know, let, let's hope the parents have kindness towards us that we were doing the best we could with the information that we had at the time type of a thing.
Right, and it is difficult to make a call very late in the mor, in the morning to have everybody pivot and get themselves ready.
Just, yeah, just doing the best we could with the information we had.
It probably won't make you feel any better, Joe, but all my years sitting here, we've never faulted any superintendent for calling a day. I know the parents have, but we have.
Right, you're on the side of caution, like.
We have, yes.
I know, you got, yeah, you got your process.
Yeah, I agree with you, Jerry.
But I think this, this plan also moves, if a snow day becomes a remote day and calling it the night before, I also think it allows superintendents to work more regionally.
Agreed.
Because then you can talk the night before about, because, you know, sometime, most of the time, not most of the time, some of the time when you wake up, you see Monroe two hours, Shelton closed, Trumbull 90 minutes, Easton Redding, whatever.
It's all botched or, or botched.
Yeah, and so I think this gives a better ability, but I do hear Shannon's point and agree that if Mother Nature doesn't cooperate and parents the next day have to go to work and their, their students are home, that causes another issue, but, yeah, I think it's gonna be.
Just if everybody's just trying to be considerate of, we're in a weird situation, we're all doing the best we can.
Right, right, I just, right, and I'm not a parent, so I didn't think about it from that perspective, but I think from the teacher perspective, if I had to teach a class and pivot with it, with two hours to think about it at 5:15 in the morning, that, that would give me some concern, and I think that also is part of, and you said before, it's part of your discussions with the union as it is right now, so as we get into winter, I think it's gonna be an important part of the discussion.
Yeah. That was it, the last piece up here is just for Darlene?
Does anybody have any questions for Joe?
Joe wants to move on.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
Please say no.
No.
Okay, Mike, can you hear me? It doesn't speak.
There you go.
Okay, better?
Yes.
Okay.
Part of the muffle problem, I think, I'm so sorry, but I, I think these masks, like, even in real life, not on YouTube, I find myself saying, what, I'm sorry, excuse me, like, it's muff, so it probably maybe magnifies it on YouTube or something.
So we apologize to those watching at home, we don't mean to, not, you not understanding us, or some of it is the fact of the mask.
Yeah.
So my two sheets are on pages 39 and 40. 39, I, I believe, is the, the budget, the monthly budget, so if you take a look at that, just that first line is out of whack, so that $4,807. This is, this includes, I want to talk a little bit about this line, we made an adjustment on, to this line in the beginning of the school year before the budget was adopted here, and, but, and when we asked for funds to be moved from summer transportation into this outside agency line, and the reason for that is that we know that this is a line with many variables. So we had, we're, just so that I'm clear on this, we had, and comforted all the money for services that are in place to date, so this, this includes that, and then we have estimated costs for anticipated services for the rest of the school year, so we're, we're trying to look ahead. We talked a little bit last time about how Ron, we put that hold fund in that line, so everything that we think is coming up has been put into that line. A few, a few of the items in this line, we budget for every year because historically, they, they've been in, they've been in the budget, and some years they've been utilized, some years they have not, so there are, there are some lines in there that, or some items in there, you know, that, just one comes to the top of my head, $50,000. We need that line, that item in that line, just in case, we need it for a service, for a student, but those, those, there's a couple of them in there that may be expended, may not be expended by the end of the school year, but it's there if we need it, and I think that's, it's important, you know, when we, when we budget each year, that we put those things in there that we know that, that might come up, you know, and these, these are things that come up on a yearly basis that are unpredictable, you know, so. So the, like I said, these POs, they may be expended, they may not be, so is, does anybody have any questions on that? I mean, the rest of the lines are all exactly the same as last month. And I may come to the table next month and say that, you know, we were able to reduce one of those items in, in that line, so, because as we go on in the year, if we're not expanding it, we can reduce that, so.
Yeah, but we're still too early, we're still.
We're very early, yeah.
Two months into a year.
Right, we're, we're very early, but I think, you know, to date, we, we do now, because we had said that we didn't have everything in, in the lines, but now we do, so.
Great, okay. Anybody have questions on that? No?
No, I've got it there, it's really fluid, insurance and special ed are really fluid, a lot of things are, but.
So on, and then on page 40, we have our, our enrollment, so this month, we had two students register, two new students with, that will receive services from us, we had three students move out of district, and three students that were dismissed or withdrawn from services this month, and then three students were determined to be eligible for services.
I have a question.
Sure.
I thought in the September update, you told us that out of those 12 that were being evaluated, there were two potential high-cost?
And, and in all honesty, that has not come to fruition yet, so we have not, we have not, the registration, the whole process is.
They're still in process?
Should be determined.
Yes, yes.
So there's still, there's still potential for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Looks good.
Questions? And is the pattern of the kids that are registering, you know, we have two in September, two in October, are you, are you seeing a difference from, compared to previous years? Where, is that still in line with the, what you've seen in previous years? Like, have you seen, like, a couple every month, or is this now because of the situation that we're in and more people moving in?
Usually, our biggest numbers are over the summer, so you could see, you know, in August, we had 10, you know, and the, and remember, these are just students who qualify for services, so there, there have been other students who have moved into the district, but usually, you know, this is, we have, we get a few every month, you know, and.
They move in with an IEP in place that needs to be honored.
Right, right, so, but, but usually, you know, typically, the biggest number of move-ins is, are over the summer, so.
Right, and then you'll see another bump, I would show, in like, the January.
Spring, oh, spring, too, you know, where people are, are now moving, probably Shannon can talk to that, you know, where, you know, people are buying houses and things like that, but I, I'm, I'm not sure what's gonna happen with, we, we just looked today in one of our meetings, with the number of houses that are on the market right now, so, you know, who knows what will happen.
How is the inventory, is it low or is it high?
It's lower, it's lower than usual, but they're growing really fast.
So they're still moving quick?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Doc.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
All right, we will move on to old business, we have the curriculum review, this is the second review and vote and participated for the World Language Resources, that Lisa Peterson presented next time. Now, this is, we're just voting on it, this will be built into the budget for starting on July 1, 2021. So do I have a motion to approve French 1 and French 2 resources and Spanish 3 resources as presented? Thank you, Alan. Nick, second, any discussion on this? All in favor? Great, thank you. We will move on to discussion of budget assignments. This is something that Nick had brought up a few meetings ago, about us taking different parts of the budget and possibly meeting with those administrators to kind of learn a lot more in-depth about that specific, so example, special education, somebody would be a liaison on the board to special education, they would meet with Darlene on that budget and, and Jen on that budget, so that when we come to the budget, we, they could, you that when we come to the budget, we, they could, you know, a board member can say, yep, we've already talked about that point, um, you know, in, in a discussion, a more in-depth discussion that the board member had with Jen and Darlene about, uh, different things. Um, so Nick had brought it up, um, again to me last week. I had talked to Joe and him and Ron kind of went through to kind of figure out where would be a good split, um, on splitting that if that's what the way the board wanted it to proceed. Now, if the board wants to proceed as we've always proceeded where we are going, I mean, it wouldn't change the way we would review the budget. It would just be that that board member may have a little bit more information because they've had conversations. And then we also, Joe and I talked about, it was, it would be a great way for us to communicate with the administrators and kind of get a, a relationship established there, which we really don't have. We have a great relationship with the superintendent, but really don't have with the individual administrator. So it would be a great way to establish a relationship with them and be liaisons to these different, the different schools or the different areas of the budget like special ed or athletics. So I guess this is an open discussion of what everybody would like to do.
I think it beats going through 2,000 line items, night after night after night.
I don't think we can. I already told Nick that's not acceptable. I am not going through 2,000 line items. He can, but I won't do that. That is too much.
And, and we did do a lot of cleanup last time.
We did.
Could I?
So.
I, I had something kind of mulling and it sort of piggybacks off of this, especially as we're going into budget season. What about if we had like a board of ed liaison attend board of finance meetings?
Well, I attend them anytime. I receive them.
I mean, we have people that attend board of finance meetings. Right now, Nick attends, Joe attends every month.
Yeah.
And, and stuff.
How about if they came here when we did our budget presentation so we wouldn't have to fight our own town to get something passed? How about if the selectmen and the chairman of the board of finance showed up here so we could do this all at once? So we want to approve a budget that gets cut $500,000, that gets cut $1 million, that gets cut $500,000. How about if we just all did it together? We are family. I just don't understand. I argued with Nick in the past that this process has been something going on for 80 years in this town that I just don't understand. I just don't know why we're not together.
And I think that, um, what I was going to say to Shannon's comment was, um, I think by the time it gets to the board of finance, it's too late. Like, because we've gone through hours and hours of discussions. And then by the time it gets there, and to Jerry's point, if they don't witness our discussions on whatever we talk about, it's hard to, as I said last year, it's hard to sell the story of the budget when you haven't seen the 17 hours of public discussion on it. So.
They're just looking at the numbers. They don't know the story behind the numbers.
Right. And I think one of the things that, uh, this, this idea about splitting the budget up and, and, um, continuing our relationships with these administrators after the budget process is, um, you know, we could go to a board finance meeting, um, and, you know, speak about a particular portion of the budget that we learned all about and why it's important.
I think the communication between the two, like a two-way communication would be, would be helpful and advantageous for everybody.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I agree. I mean, it sounds great.
I also agree, and I said last year that, and I'll say it again, um, I think that a joint meeting between the two boards is during the budget season is important. Um, I know that there were many times last year when the board of education budget was being discussed at the board of finance workshop on the board of ed budget that I wish I could have spoken, but as a, a regular member, not as the chair, I, I can't speak. And I think a joint meeting accomplishes a goal of the board of finance members hearing all of us on particular issues.
See, Nick, I don't think a lot of people here know what you just said. You have to repeat that. We can't speak at a board of finance meeting. Only our chairperson.
Well, only if I'm asked to speak.
And I, no, I'm just, I just wanted that clarified. We can't just jump up and say, wait a minute, let me explain why we did that.
Well, I tried, but.
No, but we can't, right, Robert's rule of order. They won't, we can't do it.
Look, I can make a comment in public participation, but unless I'm just point-blank said, you know, Donna Lane, could you please explain line item, whatever, to us? I can't even speak unless I'm asked. Now, most of the time, they're asking Joe.
No, I do, but, and to get to your point, David, it's not our meeting, but to get to Nick's point, they're trying to read a, we wrote a thousand-page book and they're reading the Cliff Notes on it and making decisions. But we wrote the thousand pages.
And so this gets me back to, this whole idea came from the town council. Because when I was on the town council, I actually liked the way they did their budget process. They have a much more stringent committee structure than we do. And so it's three members to three committees. And each committee has departments underneath those committees. So one is like P&amp;Z, IT, land use, EDC. And then amongst those three committee members, they break up those departments.
Right.
But then they go into joint meetings. The town council goes into joint session with the board of finance. And it's the nine council members and the six board of finance members with the department head. And the, the meetings are noticed as joint meetings and all members have the ability to speak.
To speak.
Which is different when the board of finance invites the board of ed to a meeting because it's not our meeting.
I understand. It's been very frustrating.
Is there anything about something like that in the town charter, I wonder?
Talking, it's talking to Mike because people at home may not hear you. Shannon?
I was just for like, what does the town charter say about that? And I don't know. Like, it's, what is?
The only charter-driven meeting that has to occur is the first selectman has to take the input of the three boards after a budget fails. But there's nothing against a meeting occurring if a.
A joint meeting?
Yeah.
The charter's silent to joint meetings.
Yeah.
The charter, the charter is silent to that. So it's, I get it.
They, they have happened in the past. It is, it's, it's not.
So I think we're talking now about two different things. One is.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
One is when we get to the board of finance, how do we handle that? But before we get there, I think it's about how we do.
Right.
Our internal. And, um, you know, we have five schools. We have five, right? Five schools.
Yes.
We have special ed, we have athletics. I don't think the chairperson should have.
Well, Joe, Joe was, Joe has the proteins on. What him and Ron felt would be good.
Yeah, we looked at, uh, we looked at, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, you know, way to break it up, seven ways.
Yeah.
I know what you're saying though. I mean, because with nine people, we could do, right now, we have it special ed, elementary schools, middle school, high school, athletics, facilities, and then curriculum instruction and PD. But if you did do each elementary school, you'd have, you'd have the nine people.
Well, and I think that adds the liaison to the elementary school for the budget. It creates that relationship with the principal. I'm trying to match the nine of us up with people.
Yep, yep. You could even have three people meet with the three elementary principals together.
Great.
A lot of the time, they're, you know.
As long as it's not a forum, go for it.
Yeah, right.
So is, is the board members interested in moving for this? Now, this probably won't be as in-depth this year because we're getting it off the ground pretty late and they're already into the budget process. Um, we did talk about tonight, they are still, Joe and Ron are still on tap to have that budget done and completed, um, prior to Thanksgiving, which is only a few weeks away. Um, so this probably won't be as in-depth as, let's say, next year where you would have more of an established relationship because it's already November. But this would be obviously moving towards this. What is everybody's feelings?
Yeah, I think it's great.
I do too.
I would say maybe it's better to, to Joe, but is it, by doing this now, this, maybe not late in the process, but certainly behind the eight ball, I mean, are we going to, will this be welcomed on the administrative side?
I don't think it would be, you know, I don't want to speak for, for these guys, but I don't think it would be a horrible thing. It would, we were kind of talking about this during the finance meeting before, that, you know, some of them have already presented their budgets to me. Um, you know, they have, uh, um, you know, this would give them kind of a second go around at presenting the budget before we come together with the big group. So I don't, you know, I don't think a half hour, 45 minutes would be a.
Maybe Darlene and Jen hope to not put you on the splat and steam too. What do you guys think of it? Because you guys are going to be the ones having to kind of talk to us too. But be honest.
Yeah. Well, like you said, we're, we're in the process now, actually, Jen and I meeting with, um, Joe and Jen, Mark, Mark, to present ours. So, uh, we are in the process, but, um, having a conversation is definitely worth a while, I think.
Steve?
Uh, I don't have any issue with it.
Be honest.
Um, no, I don't have an issue with it. It could be, it could be weird, I think, at first, but I think once you build that relationship and rapport and, you know, it's going to be strange for me anyway because I don't really know any of you all that well anyway to start. Budget usually brings out the true personalities.
Especially Monroe, Steve.
You know, even behind a mask, you're, you know, you're going to show your true self. No, so I, no, I don't think it's a bad thing. I, you know, it's transparency. It's not like we're trying to hide anything. So I don't, I don't see an issue with it.
Okay.
It's different.
I think it's great. And I think part of this is not only just budget relation, budget related, I think it's also trying to build a relationship and rapport with the administrative staff too.
Yeah. And as I said a couple of meetings ago, there, a, a lot of other boards of ed do liaisons to the schools. But I think that, like the principal and, and board members, but I think that misses out on like, you know, special education. I mean, that's a huge part of any budget. And if you're just liaising with the school principals, you might miss a whole part of that. So I think kind of breaking it up in a way where we can all take a little piece of, um, the district gets, it gets us a little bit, uh, more in-depth. Although I don't know how much more depth you can get than 2,000 line items, but we're going to try.
Right. But it also, it also makes, I think, a board member also an advocate for that specific area where, you know, like if there comes a point where we're, we're sitting here having to make a cut and then you're saying, well, we can't cut this because I've met with them. This is desperate need. We can't do this. And then, you know, is anybody else? I think it makes also our jobs, you know, a, a little bit more, I don't know what the word I'm looking for.
Ownership. I think we would have ownership.
Thank you.
I mean, that's, that's, you know, we'll have ownership. Now, they've explained why. We know why. So now we'll sell it to you guys.
And that was always the comment of the department head at town hall, was like when they came to those meetings and they would, they would look at their town council member. Because when they were getting like questions, they'd be like, are you gonna, are you going to say what we talked about? So, yeah, you definitely feel like you have an advocate when you come up here instead of just seeing, we all see it for the first time.
So what I could do, I can send out to everyone here, the, um, you know, like I said, elementary, and what we could do is have three people to, for the three, you know, that can meet together. Um, the middle school, high school sped, special education, athletics, facilities, IT, and then curriculum instruction and PD. And people can.
Right. And don't think you can do Zoom too. Don't think, oh, I have to meet with them, you know, face to face. I would think that. And again, I think you're going to be easing into it this year because again, I would imagine you'd have to wait until you had the budget in hand.
Yep.
Beforehand. So like somebody who's earlier in the process, let's say you're starting with, I don't know, facilities, the person on facilities would probably need to have a conversation, whether that's on phone, whether that's on Zoom. And that's going to be, depends on everybody's, you know, specific, um, schedule. So don't think, oh my gosh, I have to fit something else in. It could be a phone call. It could be a Zoom.
Yeah.
You know, um, and, and stuff like that with, with person, you know. But I would think that you'd have to have some sort of your, the budget in front of you first.
Sounds good.
And again, I think this is more this year kind of testing it. And next year would be much more involved, but just starting that relationship and just starting.
Yep.
That. Is everybody good with that?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
So Joe, you're going to email that?
I will. I'll send that out.
Put our names in for what we're interested in?
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect. All right, we will move on to new business. We have, um, approval of an October, October budget transfer. Um, Ron, do you just want to explain? We're just making one little transfer.
Yeah. So as, as I had discussed earlier in the finance meeting, it's, it's a, uh, request by our Mastic principal to transfer funds to purchase a laptop computer.
Do I, do I have a motion to approve the October budget transfer for the full, uh, full year 21 budget as presented? This Dean and Jerry, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion passes. Um, we have item B, which is the first review of four different policies. Unfortunately, George could not be with us this evening. Um, Jack, do you feel comfortable? Or somebody else? Jerry, who's on that committee, to discuss these four?
Jerry and Shannon are all right with me?
Oh, yeah, Jack, we're fine.
So we met on October 5th as a policy committee. We did review, uh, four, uh, four different policies, all from the business, non-instructional operations, the three thousand series, which we've been looking at, uh, this year. Uh, first one is, uh, policy 3280, gifts grant and requests. Uh, this policy addresses the acceptance of gifts or donations to the board on behalf of the school, charges the superintendent to create criteria for accepting gifts and evaluating the offer of gifts. The revision to the policy regards the accepting of gifts through crowdfunding, um, which is a process of, uh, requesting a specific gift or donation, uh, to, uh, fund, uh, a specific orchid fund, a specific purchaser project. It's typically through, uh, some sort of social media website, something like DonorsChoose. The policy establishes the protocol of having the principal of the school approve a request made through crowdfunding. It also designates the school district as the owner of any items gifted to the schools in this manner. So that's 3280. Uh, we reviewed policy 3231, Medicaid reimbursement for special education students. Um, the policy states Monroe schools will seek Medicaid reimbursement for the, for eligible medically related services to Medicaid provided for special education students. The revision actually cites the specific services that the district can bill to Medicaid, which include audiologist services, evaluation and testing, nurses' services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, psych- psychological services and social work services. Policy 3240, tuition fees. Uh, this policy allows the board to permit students from other districts to attend local schools when they can be accommodated. It also establishes the right of the district to charge tuition to the sending district for the student. We have historically published the tuition amounts in the vault, in the policy. Um, tuition, as you all know, as a board, we establish those annually. Um, and they're published also in our, just in our dues and fees documents. So the revisions of the policy is therefore that we are not publishing any longer in the policy, the tuition and fees, because that then causes us technically to have to review the policy annually. So in this, in this manner, because we do annually update the dues and fees and that's referred to in the policy, they, it still goes to those updated fees. Um, and then 3260, sales, trade-in and disposal of books, equipment and supplies. Uh, Monroe Board, uh, policy that property no longer needed for public school purpose shall be referred to the policy committee for disposition. The revision of the policy provides principals with discretion to, to dispose or sell property with a value below $500 that is no longer needed once received in prior approval of the superintendent. Uh, so this would not require the policy committee approval. So it gives some discretion to the principal and the superintendent of anything under $500 to make these decisions.
Great, thank you. So this is the first review. Nick?
Can I just ask one question on, um?
No, oh, sorry.
Of all people, uh, 3231, the Medicaid reimbursement, the list that is in blue, so the revision to the policy, is that list exhaustive?
It is.
Okay. So there's no need for like a, including but not limited to?
Correct.
Okay.
Most of these, Nick, come right from CAPE. But Jack, am I right with that? Most of our changes?
That, that list, actually, I think is from CAPE. That's, uh, that's specifically what we.
So mo- most of these, we just kind of copied CAPE?
No, no, I totally get that. I was just wondering if, are we losing out on not listing something that could come up later that we want to list in like a, including but not limited to? But the answer is no, it's exhaustive.
Yeah.
Great. So this will be, these are our first review. Anybody else have questions on it? So we will be voting on these, um, at our next meeting. Does anybody have anything else before we move on to adjournment?
Don't forget to vote.
Yeah.
6:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
All right. A motion to adjourn? I knew he was going to be the first one. Jerry and Shannon, um, all in favor? Great, thank you so much, everybody, this evening.
Thank you.
Nice, nice job.